And good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners, Board of County Commissioner meeting for April Tuesday, April the 9th. I'm John Hutchings. I'm Chair of the Board. To my left is Co-Chair Commissioner Gary Edwards. To my right is Commissioner Ty Mensah. To his right is La Bonita Omar, Clerk of the Board. To her right is County Manager Ramiro Chavez. And seated next to him is Assistant County Manager Finance Director Robin Campbell. To her right is Elizabeth Petrich, our Deputy Prosecuting Attorney, Legal Advisor. So with that, we please join Commissioner Mensah in leading us with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there any changes or amendments, whatever, to the agenda for today?
No, sir.
Nope, okay. And is there a motion?
I would move to approve Tuesday, April 9th, 2019, the agenda for today. Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. We have an agenda and approval for the Board Meeting Minutes from March 26th and April 7th of this year.
I would move to approve the Board Meeting Minutes from March 26th, 2019, and April 2nd, 2019. Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you. Now we're at the point of the agenda. Item number one, opportunity for the public to address the Board, and I have some rules on engagement. This public engagement is, it's your time to talk to the Board and address your Board. It's not for us to engage in question and answer, or discussion, or debate. And so don't look for any response from us, because you shouldn't get one, and if you do, or if you don't, I don't want you to think we're being rude. The County Manager will follow up with specific items next week if some things are brought to his attention, or even later on today. Speakers are limited to a total of three minutes to address the Board. Speakers may not donate their time, or their speaking time, to another person. The Board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for a good cause. Please silence your phones. No comments that allude or offensive to a reasonable person. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind. No comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion for a nonprofit, for a for-profit business. No comments that are inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory. Any and all materials provided to the County over to the bench here may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 42.56 of the RCW. And please, no remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before this Board on appeal. Thank you for your attention for that, or to that. And you're given three minutes, and up on the Board here, it's a three-minute countdown. And La Bonita Omar, our Clerk of the Board, has the timer. And it times itself out, and when it hits a zero, you hear a chime, and that means your time is up. If you are mid-sentence, go ahead and finish your comment, and then we'll wrap it up and move on. What I'll do is I will call a list of attendees, or people that would like to speak. I'll call the first one to the podium. Please state your name and your address, and I'll have the other person come up and standing in the wings, ready to go. And we'll continue until there's nobody else that wants to speak. So having said that, let's start with Mary Ann Thompson. Mary Ann Thompson here, followed by Esther Cronenberg.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, ma'am. Can you get that microphone right smack in front of your mouth?
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Perfect.
My name's Mary Ann Thompson, and I'm here today representing the Olympia Yacht Club.
And where do you live, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I live at 201 Simmons Street in Olympia. And I'm here representing the Olympia Yacht Club, and my mission, which I did choose to accept, was to invite you all to attend the opening day ceremonies for boating season in South Sound. This year it's happening at the Olympia Yacht Club on May 11th. Opening Day celebrations are just one of the many events that the yacht club hosts each year to add to the richness of our community. Every year, the yacht club hosts around 500 kids in our sailing school. Talk about crime prevention in our youth. They learn to love Puget Sound, they get good water safety skills, and they become stewards for our waters. Every year, high school sailors, again, hosted, their boats, and the club is hosted at the Olympia Yacht Club, travel around the United States, representing our county in national events. For many people in our community, the lighted boat show kicks off the holiday season. Last year, we were surprised at the number, but I think there were 1,000 people on Percival Landing, watching the lighted boats go by. And on the first Sunday of December every year, the Olympia Yacht Club hosts over 150 special needs adults. We take them on a cruise related to Santa Claus and host them for coffee and cookies later. So this year, I'm inviting you to please join the Olympia Yacht Club for Opening Day celebrations. We've been, oh, 8:30 in the morning.
8:30 in the morning?
Yeah. And I've got your invitations here.
Oh, good.
And we've been hosting this event since 1904. The yacht club's been part of our community since 1884. So thank you for your time, and please do come and support the boaters.
Thank you very much. You can just send it over to them over here. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Esther, followed by Jerry Durker.
I don't know if you can see this here.
Maybe Jerry might help you or something. I don't know. There you go.
Okay. Esther Cronenberg, I live in, off of Cooper Point Road in Green Cove Basin watershed. I'm here to talk about the Green Cove Park project. That's a development that's proposed on Cooper Point Road, right on the border of Thurston County, in the urban growth area of City of Olympia. And it proposes that 181 houses be built on top of an old gravel mine that was also used as a landfill, a wirehouse, export log yard, and a toxic waste dump. The suspected toxic waste, besides from people who dumped their own trash, is from the Port of Olympia and other West Bay industrial sites, some of which predate environmental laws. It likely contains very high levels of dioxins and petroleum from wood treatment wastes. It's our understanding this material was never cleaned up, but only buried. Residents' reports and photos of suspect wastes have been corroborated with DNR inspections and field investigations, lending credibility to their reports and meriting substantive additional investigation. The Phase 1 environmental review of this project appears seriously deficient. It doesn't consider EPA or Department of Natural Resources reports. Proper procedures were not followed by the developer or the City of Olympia. A public disclosure request from DNR revealed years of violations of state law and illegal dumping that were never addressed and never enforced. There is evidence from several credible sources. Residents repeatedly complained about waste being dumped and have pictures to prove it. Test pits corroborate the residents' observations. DNR's own inspectors reported the waste and violation of DNR regulations year after year. And aerial photos repeatedly show waste dump on neighbors' properties and beyond the permitted mine permit limits. Based on the developer's own geotechnical review of the test pits, estimates show there could be as much as 325,000 tons of buried waste. The sensible approach is to require additional investigation. The investigations paid for by the developer give the impression the site has been investigated, though they merely skimmed the surface of a large body of fill material. The Department of Ecology has apparently come to the conclusion only innocuous construction debris is in the backfill. This appears to be erroneous conclusion. Appropriate sampling has never been done for groundwater, surface water, and sediment leading to off-site sensitive receptors. There are also concerns about the effects of the stormwater runoff from this site beyond the city boundaries into the county. The city and county adapted the Green Cove Basin Comprehensive Plan in 1998. It states the top priority that emerged during the planning process was reducing future stormwater runoff to Green Cove Creek, in recognition of the serious impacts it would cause, including flooding, destabilizing the stream channel, and threatening pre-listed endangered salmon habitat. There's three salmon runs that go up Green Cove Creek, the shellfish, and the mud minnow. And it's also a critical recharge area in the Green Cove Comprehensive Plan. So the water that goes down there goes into the aquifer for the City of Olympia and everybody out on Cooper Point, and into Bud Inlet, and into Elk Inlet. So we're asking that the county ask DNR and Department of Ecology to do further investigation and to do reclamation on the site, which has never been done. Thanks.
Thank you, Esther. After Jerry is Petra Lewin. Esther, do you want to leave your?
I got it. I'll get it. I'm going to point you at a couple of things here, too. My name's Jerry Durker. I live at 17, pardon me, 2826 Cooper Point Road Northwest, Olympia, Washington, 98502. Sorry, I've lived too many places around here. I'm also speaking about the same site and stuff. As you notice on the thing down there, there are.
See these little areas here? There would normally be.
Leave it there, because the camera's zoomed in on it already.
Normally, there would be three of those, three to four of those across the whole site. They actually exist as canyons on either end of, on either end of the site, on other people's property. Mr. David Gillingham owns one of them. He has a canyon ends at a wall 30 feet tall, right at the site of this. Part of the things that I forgot to mention here, when I was here with the large photo here a couple of weeks ago, was that they had pierced the perched aquifers in a number of places over there, over the last 30 years or more, possibly even before that. That created, that took, and the different aquifer layers here, at least one to two of them have been pierced from the top down, and they're dumping contaminated stormwater down into the lower aquifers, which is the aquifers for Allison Springs and the wells that the City of Olympia and all the wells on Cooper Point have. This is a very serious problem here. One of the things is, is that, like you mentioned, there has been no cleanup. There's 25 feet to 30 feet of stuff in various different places on this site, between the canyons and the old places where they dug up, and dug all the way down to the blue-gray earthenware clay, and filled it all back up, and then put a little bit of gravel on the top and made it look pretty. But it doesn't really look that pretty if you've ever been up there. Just the fumes coming off that site, as I mentioned, a couple of years ago, when I was out there, I took one breath, and it was enough to burn the hole inside of my throat, stuff like that. So there are, there are things out there that are really nasty and stuff, and we really need to remove that. That's why we're asking the County, as well as the city and everyone else, to have DNR, make them do the actual reclamation and remove all non-native material off that site, as it's required by the reclamation permit for DNR. DNR has allowed them to continue operations from the 11.4 acre site that the County had permitted back in 1972, that actually, if you noticed that 1972 aerial photo there, you guys didn't get, the County didn't get that until 1978. You didn't know that it had already been mined out much farther than that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Do you want to leave that there now? Thank you, sir. Petra Lewin, followed by Robert Brown.
Robert Brown is one of the persons.
Okay. He's in your stead?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Well, I should have put his name first.
Okay, thank you. Did I pronounce your name right? Did I pronounce your name properly, though?
My name's Robert A. Brown, Jr. I live at 9145 Prather Road. May I approach you?
I'm sorry? Oh, no, over here, sir. Over here, thank you.
Commissioner, can you have a copy?
Thank you.
I do? Okay.
Go back to the mic so everybody can hear you, sir. Thank you.
Brought to my attention, I ought to get to be doing something, but we were put into long-term agriculture. We were zoned, trained, zoned into that, and it wasn't done properly. And the County Attorney told us to wait till the time changed, tide changes, and things happen different, because you couldn't change it. What started it all was, we came in for an address for two places on our property, and Scott Clark told me no, he wouldn't give them to me. So I went to our Commissioner, and he said, "I'll be right back." He came back with the addresses for us. From that point on, Scott Clark lied to us. And when we sent us to a Commissioners' Meeting, that was supposed to be just a meeting and workshop, they happened to be voting on our property, and put us into LTA with a picture, aerial picture, we gave him, that he said would guarantee we wouldn't be in LTA. He put it up on the wall, and they voted us into it. We objected, and the Commissioners were nice enough to let us have time to rebut it, which we did. And so went back to Scott Clark, because he was the Director, and he said if we had, the community put up a, signed a notice saying that they didn't want us in LTA, it would get us out. So we did. We got 76 names, 75 said they didn't want us in LTA. So we go to the next meeting, and he says that they don't count. The people had to show up. He didn't tell us that. So we go to get, finally decided to do it ourselves. We look it up, and we get a soils examination, a whole shot on soils, to see if, through wetlands or whatever, it would take us out of LTA, which it did. And then we went into the Commissioners' Advisory Committee. He didn't show up with the documents. I had extra ones made, and I gave it to him, and they said that we should be out of LTA. Scott Clark went back to the Commission and told them that we should stay in LTA. So then we sat, so finally, at the end, I went to the, I went to the Governor, said, "Hey, now what do we do?" She said, "There's nothing we can do, because you all voted in, and that's the way it is. But go to the Congress." So we went to the Congress lady. She asked me if I would mind having the Commissioners and us in a meeting in her office. I says, "Please do it." You know? She says, "You can't tell them what to do. I know that. But bottom line is, they can keep money from the County." You know, that's the ways to do things. And everything Scott Clark, and I think it was all because his pride got hurt. I don't know what our Commissioner said to him, whatever, and then he got caught when he said it was a regular meeting for the Commissioners, yet it was a thing he voted on.
Mr. Brown, are you nearly done? Your time is up, sir.
So I just gave those to you, so.
You have it. Mr. Mensah has it?
Yep.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Petra? Petra, you coming up, ma'am? Thank you.
So I'm Petra Lewin. I live at 9145 Prather Road, Centralia. It is Thurston County. It's on the very edge of Thurston County. To go on with the story, when they explained to us that if the soil test didn't come back favorable for the LTA, that we would be taken out of that jurisdiction. In fact, the money that we spent in having a wetlands evaluation indicated that we were over 50% in wetlands or non-suitable agricultural soils. The Commission, or Scott Clark, I believe, sent the report to somebody in Spokane, which reevaluated the soils and indicated that they thought that it was, part of the property was, should stay in LTA and part of it should not. Then, as a result of various meetings, and this all occurred in 2012, although the notice that we had received was in 2008, and because of the government shutdowns and lack of funds, we were unable to present all this information until 2012. Yes, then we went to see Bud subsequently, who was our Commissioner, who indicated that if the winds changed and he had a little more jurisdiction, that possibly we could do something about it. Now we are here again. In between that, I went to see Futurewise, who apparently had filed lawsuit against Thurston County and was one of the reasons why there was this land grab. What part of the law says that there should be no taking without just compensation. Futurewise agreed with me on that, although they were slightly hostile. But, and when I've talked to the assessor and the treasurer downstairs, I've asked whether or not there has been any compensation for the taking of property rights, and they indicated there have been, although I don't know who has received those, that compensation. In any case, all that being said, we're, because of some medical problems and other issues, we are back again to present our case and hopefully resolve some of what we feel legal ramifications were not followed. Okay. Oh, yeah, I guess one other aspect was, is that when all this was going on in 2012, the County Attorney had indicated that he thought that there were some serious wrongs that had occurred and was apologetic to us, for what good that did us. Anyway, that's why we're here, and we have reiterated all the paperwork that was submitted at the time for, hopefully, a different Commission review.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Josh, would you mind checking, is there anybody else that's signed up? Okay. Nobody else has signed up, but I'm going to offer it up to the gallery, if anybody would like to address the Commission, now's the time. All right, Esther, come on up, state your name, please, and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Scott Manister, from Yelm, 15720 92nd Court. I just followed up on, I've been having meetings with all of you individually, which I probably should have done that in the very beginning, when I presented my Second Amendment preservation ordinance. I'm going to continue, and hopefully, we can have a work session on this, or hopefully yous can vote on this, because it's really important that you uphold your oaths. And our oath is looking out for the people. And our people's rights are just being violated by our elected officials, not you, our Attorney General. And we have a petition that we're going to go after him for the criminal acts that he is committing. And I'm going to Yelm again tonight. I've presented that same ordinance to the City of Yelm. Hopefully, we can get some votes and get our elected officials to uphold their oaths. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that want to address the Commission? All right. Thank you. We're moving on then. Thank you. That brings us to Agenda, Agenda item number two, County Manager's Update.
Ramiro?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. I'd like to follow up with a couple of public testimonies that you receive in past meetings. Let me begin with the public testimony that you receive on March 26th, 2019, from Mr. Doug Carmen. He is the Chair of the Long Lake Management District, LMD. The details of his letter was discussed this morning before you, and Mr. Carmen was in attendance. I don't want to get to all the details of that discussion, so, but Mr. Carmen was in attendance. So the next step will be for me to draft a formal response to his letter, and we will mail that to him as soon as feasible. So I just want to make sure that the public knows that you have discussed that request from Mr. Carmen. Also, you received last week a public testimony from Michelle Hawkins, and this is related to a bio-solids application on the Yelm area. Her request was to, you to consider, as stated, quote unquote, "The Board has the authority under the Growth Management Act to amend the docket in order to start processing and revising the docket." Her recommendation was for you to consider amending Title 24. And Title 24 of the Thurston County Code outlines a simple line, related to bio-solids, that we need to engage with the Department of Ecology on our memorandum of understanding. I briefly mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, but I'm going to reiterate this matter. You already have heard the details of staff's perspective, and there's two elements. Yes, in fact, you do have the authority to amend the docket on a yearly basis, which you do, both on the Development Code docket, as well as the Comprehensive Plan docket. And the docket, what it means is, is the work plan that you approve for staff to go ahead and start performing those duties on the upcoming year. So Ms. Hawkins is correct, you have the authority. However, under state law, bio-solids applications are reviewed and permitted by the Department of Ecology. It's not permitted by the County. And so adding to the docket at this point, perhaps it's going to be a fruitless exercise, since there is no going to be the authority for you to govern the applications related to a bio-solid project. So, but you do have taken a proactive action related to this particular application, in this, at this particular project. And this is located at the 19724 128th Avenue Southeast in Yelm. Some of the proactive approaches that you have taken, back in February 13, 2018, you as a Board of Health sent, required a letter to the Department of Ecology, asking DOE to review this application, because from your perspective, this application didn't meet the standards to assess all the potential environmental impacts to this project. Also, on the same date, staff from the Department of Health and Social Services provided a lengthy response to DOE, that would be Mr. Peter Lyon, who was overseeing this project, outlining some of the, perhaps some of the technical gaps on this application as well. Further, last week, you sent a letter to Mr. Brad Thompson. He is the Regional Director for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. In so many words in this letter, you submitted those copies of the letters that I just mentioned to you, submitted to DOE, and also urging the U.S. Fish and Wildlife to take a proactive approach to look into this particular permit, because from our perspective, it could have potential impacts to the environment, both on the threatened and endangered species, such as the Chinook salmon, Nisqually steelhead, and the Massala pocket gopher, due to the proximity of the Nisqually River, and also due to the impact on the groundwater feeding the Nisqually River. So although perhaps, you know, there may not be an avenue as to how we, the County, implement bio-solid permits in the future, certainly, the Board, U.S. Board of Health, well, as Board of County Commission, and County Staff, has taken a proactive action to make sure that all the environmental studies are completed before this project can move forward. That is in response to the letter from Ms. Hawkins, they submitted last week. And the next letter that I was submitted to you via public testimony as well, was from Mr. Michael Stedman. And he's serving, he's a council member for the City of Lacey, and he's serving as the Chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. In his testimony, he highlighted a couple of issues related to the request for proposals. The County is moving forward and securing the services for the long-term services for the solid waste activities. And I think that's probably the gist of his comment here. So as a result of that testimony, I attended last week's Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting. meeting. At least from my point of view, I think it was a fruitful conversation. The members appreciated me going and having a conversation as to how we appreciate the county's input from this Solid Waste Advisory Committee, and also how we're gonna find a way as to how we make, we provide their support for the Solid Waste Advisory Committee to be successful in the future. So I'd just like to wrap those up in terms of the public testimony you received in the last two weeks.
Very nice, any questions? County Manager?
Just on the biosolid issue, a nuance, I think, that's, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, the legal rubric around the biosolids allows Department of Ecology to, to delegate or grant us some input, but they've chosen not to do that?
Thank you. Within the RCW and the WACS particularly, it states the responsibilities of the Department of Ecology to permit those, those projects, and also give the ability, perhaps, to delegate those permits to the county or local jurisdictions. And we did reach out to Department of Ecology related to this particular matter, and that will be the gist of the potential memorandum of understandings. The initial response from DOE was they, perhaps, was they were not interested in delegating that authority to the counties. So, thank you.
So if you'd like more local control over these types of issues, there's a potentially pressure to be exerted?
Right, and not to say that perhaps you, as a commission, may see this as an opportunity for the 2020 Legislative Session to add this to your legislative agenda, as to how the biosolid permitting process can give it more control to local jurisdictions, because at the end of the day, we, the local jurisdictions, are the ones who have to deal with the consequences or not of this particular operation.
Thank you very much for bringing that point up, they just denied it, yeah. Mr. Edwards?
No, good to go.
Is that it?
Yeah, and lastly, let me give you, for the public, some of the key meetings that you had last week. On Tuesday, April the 2nd, you held a public hearing related to a potential creation of the Special Use District on Summit Lake. You received quite a few verbal and written testimony. On April 23rd, during your agenda setting, I will bring this item for you to discuss and determine what the next steps you would like to take on this project. As a matter of clarification, this is a request for, for the Commissions to allow to continue the process of the creation of the Special Use District. At this point, it is not up to the Board of County Commissions to create the district, it's the voters, the individuals involved within this district who have to determine their future as to how they want to create the district or not. Also, on Wednesday, April-
Before you, before you move on from that one, also, this was a citizen or residence-initiated activity, not anything by the county?
Yeah, and, and the state law related to, you know, the creation of a Special Use District is very prescriptive. They have to meet a minimum, require petition signatories, and I believe they met that minimum required, they submitted an application fee, which we're running out money on that application fee process in this process. Then you hold a public hearing for the public to give you their public testimony, whether you consider to, for the process to move forward into an election. And that's really perhaps the decision point that you may consider on April 23rd. And staff is gonna bring a synopsis of the comments that we have received, and then you will have the opportunity to discuss among yourselves the next steps. On Wednesday, April 3rd, you heard in the morning the official, initial briefing of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Code docket. And also, on that day, you have the opportunity to welcome new employees to county government. On Thursday, April 4th, only Commissioner Minster attended the Jail Population Crisis Action Team meeting. I think it was a great meeting to the extent the Jail Population Crisis Action Team will be renamed to Jail Resource Team. And, and we'll schedule a meeting in the next couple, three months. That's all I have for you.
All right, thank you, sir. Moves us to Agenda Item Number Three on the calendar, or on the agenda, and that's Consent Items A through F. Is there a motion?
Yes, I would move that we accept and approve Consent Items A through F.
Second.
Any discussion on those? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Agenda Item Number Four, Department Items, Public Health, Social Services, approval of Department of DSHSS, and agreement for respite care. Margaret, welcome.
Good afternoon. Am I at the right level, can you hear me? Wonderful, thank you for having me, I'm Margaret Huff with Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. I manage the Specialized Recreation Program, and I know I've been before you before, but I'll give a recap. Our program is specially designed to meet the unique needs of adults with developmental disabilities. Many of these folks have nowhere else to go for their leisure time and choose to come and spend their time with us. And specifically today, I'm here to request the authorization for our Director to sign a program agreement with Developmental Disabilities Administration at the State to continue our respite in the community settings contract. What that means is, many of our clients live with family members who provide round-the-clock care for our clients. The only time they get a rest is when they come and participate in our activities. So we hold a contract with the State, we bill the State for reimbursement for our program fees, so this contract does not have any money tied to it, it's a strictly reimbursable contract, and without this contract in place, roughly half of our clients wouldn't be able to come to the programs. So we, we look forward to this continued agreement with the State.
Okay, any comments, questions?
No, and I might point out that oftentimes, when we don't have questions, it's probably because we discussed it at an earlier work session, as we did in this matter.
And again, this is state-funded through DSHS?
That is correct.
It's beautiful, it's a beautiful thing.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I would move to approve the January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2020 County Program Agreement between Thurston County and the Washington State Department of Social and Health Services to provide community settings, respite care services to adults with developmental disabilities, and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign the contract.
Second.
I've proven a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and motion carries, thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
Very much. Agenda Item Number Five, Public Works Resolution Calling for Sealed Bids, Matt Unzelman is in the House.
Yeah, Attorney in Board of County Commissioners.
Can you move that up? Yeah, there you go, thank you, Mike.
Public Works is requesting permission today from the Board of County Commissioners to advertise a project for the Olympic View Elementary Safe Route to Schools project. The Olympic View Elementary School is in the Northeastern School District, it's located between I-5 and Martin Way. I guess a good way of describing where it's at, it's behind the Winco or behind the Walmart area. Some of the project improvements include installation of traffic calming devices such as speed humps and raised intersections, as well as improving all the ADA ramps throughout the neighborhood that kids and others with disabilities use. Project improvements were planned based upon several community, community meetings with local residents, as well as communications with the school. This was a joint effort between Thurston County Public Works Staff and also the Health Department. The estimated construction cost is $600,000, which is entirely coming from state and federal funding. If the Board of County Commissioners allows us to proceed with advertisement today, we can get this project out in time so that we can actually do this work while school's out this summer, which is a big deal for the school and the local community.
And it's a safe route.
Exactly.
All right, any questions or comments?
Is there any reason why Olympic, I mean, why Olympic View School, is there any reason why that school was picked?
The best way to describe it is, for anybody who's been out there when parents are dropping kids off, or kids are getting out of school, I don't know if chaos is a good technical term to use, but it's, it's very busy.
So there was a good need there at that school?
Yeah, and so what we do is with the Safe Route Schools program, is we evaluate-
Okay, close to the mic, would you, thank you.
We, each, every two, three years, we evaluate a different school. Last, last, was it last year or the year before, we did Lydia Hawk Elementary School, and now I know that we're looking in upcoming years for the Meadow School. So we just look around the local school districts and see where that need is.
Thank you.
Anything?
No, I might just comment, the need is there because kids are 30% of our population, but 100% of our future, and we want to make sure we look out for them.
That's right. All right, is there a motion?
Yes, I would move to approve the resolution calling for sealed bids and authorize the county engineer to set the bid date and time for receipt and opening of said bids for the construction of the Olympic View Elementary Safe Routes to School project, and that's CP number 61506. Upon receipt of authorization from the Washington State Department of Transportation to use state and federal funding for construction.
Second.
Been moved a second, any further discussion? Nope, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries, thank you, Matt, very much.
Thank you for your time.
5B is again sealed bids for a different project, and I have Visil Barota, please come up, Visil.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Can you move that mic down, move it down for him? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Public Works is requesting permission from the Board to advertise a call for sealed bids for supplying asphalt materials for the Road Operations Division of Public Works. These materials will be used for the annual road maintenance activities, and the purpose of this bid is to secure the best unit cost for each type of material. And the purchase of asphalt materials is part of the Public Works budget, and our maintenance work aligns with the Initiative Eight of the county's strategic plan. Any questions?
Questions? Questions, comments?
No, sir. I think he's covered it.
All right, go right ahead.
I would move to approve the resolution and call for sealed bids for furnishing a supply of various kinds of asphalt materials to the Department of Public Works for annual road maintenance activities.
Second.
Been moved a second, any further discussion? Nope, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Thank you, Visil, now you're here again for the next one, another sealed bid.
Yes, and this is another annual program, is the 2019 Overlay Program, and we are requesting permission to go to advertise for a call for sealed bids for a contract. And the project includes grinding and paving about 3.1 lane miles, and we have one segment of Bald Hill Road Southeast from Yelm city limits to Vale, Vale Road intersection, and then another segment of Vale Road that's north of 138th Avenue and just north of Rocking Lane. And the estimated, estimated cost is $600,000 and will be paid from the County Road Fund. And also, this project is part of the 2019 Public Works budget, and the Transportation Improvement Plan, the county facility, the county capital facility plan, and then also aligns again with the Initiative Eight of the county's strategic plan. Any questions?
Questions?
No, no questions.
Okay, go ahead.
I would move to approve the resolution and call for sealed bids for the 2019 Overlay Program, and that's CRP 98219.
Second.
Been moved a second, any further discussion? Nope, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries as well. Visil, you're on a roll, go ahead.
Yeah, the last one. Public Works also is requesting permission to advertise a call for sealed bids for a contract for the 2019 Chip Seal Program. And for this project, we apply a surface treatment, so-called chip seal treatment, on some roads in northwest quadrant of the county. The total lane miles is about 75 lane miles, that it's about 37 centerline miles. And the estimated construction cost is $1.8 million, and also, we'll be using the County Road Fund for this expense. As usually, the project will, all the projects are advertised in the Olympian, the Seattle Daily Journal of Commerce, and then also we post online on Builders Exchange website. And this project also is in the 2019 Public Works budget, and Transportation Improvement Plan, and then also aligns with the Initiative Eight of the county's strategic plan, which is support robust and well-maintained infrastructure systems for a thriving community. Any questions?
Questions?
No.
All right, go ahead.
I would move to approve the resolution calling for sealed bids and authorize the county engineer to set the bid date and time for receipt and opening of said bids for the construction, we're in the wrong item, excuse me, I think I jumped ahead.
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna make a shorter motion.
Yeah.
I would move to approve the resolution and call for sealed bids for the 2019 Chip Seal Program, CRP 98019.
Second.
Been moved a second, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.
I was trying to, I was trying to hurry Steve up on this deal.
Visil, I should have introduced you as Associate City Engineer, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yeah.
Next is 5E, Resolution for Sealed Bid for the Tabahton Creek Culvert Replacement Project, we have Civil Engineer Steve Johnson.
Yes, good afternoon, I am Steve Johnson with Thurston County Public Works, here regarding our Tabahton Creek Culvert Replacement Project. In the 2019, 2020 Thurston County Public Works biennium budget includes $4 million allocation from the second-quarter percent real estate excise tax, that's REIT II, to fund removal of fish passage barriers under county roads. Public Works reviewed the inventory of culverts, and we prioritized barrier removals for consideration. Our prioritization process considers the barrier type, whether it's a full barrier or a partial barrier, the presence of anadromous salmon, potential habitat gains, constructability, as well as cost. One of the culverts that we prioritized under this, under this year, was for the culvert under Pajner Road at Tabahton Creek, which is a tributary of the Nisqually River. I think it's worth noting that we did receive some additional contributing design fund grants from the Nisqually Tribe directly, as well as from South Puget Sound Salmon Enhancement Group, which was also sourced from the Nisqually Tribe. That helped to fund some of the design on this project. The project will replace the existing culvert crossing with, with a new 16-foot, 8-inch aluminum box culvert, and then reconstructing a portion of the stream channel within the existing right-of-way, and some signed construction easements just outside right-of-way. The estimated $650,000 construction cost will be paid from the REIT II funds allocated for the Fish Passage Enhancement Program in 2019. This project is in the current budget, as well as the capital facilities plan, and is in alignment with the county's strategic plan Initiative Eight. Do you have any questions?
Any questions on this one, or comments?
This is the first culvert passage project to come since I've gotten in the Board. Is this the $650,000, is that, is that a typical amount that it costs, is that on the cheap end, or?
There's a very wide range, yes. For, for projects about this size, which is gonna be a very large culvert, and not a, not a very deep fill, this is in, in the mid-range, in the mid-range. Now, if we were doing a large bridge, it would be more expensive, and we hope to do some larger projects next year, as well as a good balance of smaller projects as well. But yes, this is mid-range for, for projects of this scope.
I was just trying to kind of get a sense of how many we can do for $4 million, so that gives you a clue.
It's, it's less than we wish, but the, we try to prioritize so we get the best overall benefit.
Have you seen 100-point yet, 100-point culvert?
Not with my eyes, just on the video.
On the video, that's amazing, and that was what, 1 point?
That was 1.3 total project cost.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Well, I might mention, I think that through Steve working on this and, and working with other entities involved, that because we are- with other entities involved, that because we are ahead of others in, in really leading the stage.
All others, yeah.
Culvert replacement, we've been able to leverage some of our money to get some more money to do more. And thank you very much, Steve, for what you're doing. I think I jumped ahead because I like to keep us ahead on this deal.
That's good.
Absolutely.
This.
County Manager.
No, go ahead.
So if I may add, you talked about the Hunter Point project, that it was a great, successful project that opened up last year on April 25, 2019, in a couple of weeks. Public Works is going to be receiving an award from the State American Public Works Association for a very successful and innovative project. So that will be, that will be given at their spring conference. It's going to be located at the Convention Center in Tacoma, Washington. So Public Works staff will be present, as well as Commissioner Hutchins, as the Chair of the Board, and myself. If anything, I'd like to send some congratulations to the staff for the job well done, and also an appreciation from, to the board for making this commitment and a priority as to how we need to resolve fish barriers in the county.
This is one of the things I just, it just absolutely, I get so much joy out of this stuff. This is so meaningful to so many people and to the environment. I love it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Steve, very much. Is there, did you already say it or not?
No, I didn't, but I will.
Okay, read the motion, please. Thank you.
I move to approve the resolution calling for sealed bids and authorize the county engineer to set the bid date and time for receipt and opening of said bids for the construction of the Tabahtan Creek Culvert Replacement Project. And that's CP number 61492.
Second.
Been moved to second. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve, very much. Takes this item number six, Commissioners and County Managers' items. Come here, all.
Thank you, Commissioners. This particular item, which is related to the appointment of a new member to the Planning Commission for District One, this is usually down on the consent agenda, but I believe the Commissioners would like to have a discussion related to this particular appointment. The proposal before you is to appoint Mr. Don Dehan to the Thurston County Planning Commission for District One again, to fill the vacant position beginning upon appointment until December 31, 2021. You discussed this appointment a couple of weeks ago, and as I recall, the conversation was not necessarily related to the ability or the knowledge that Mr. Dehan or the contributions that he can bring to the Planning Commission. It was more about perhaps the availability that he may have in serving the commission, the Planning Commission, since he spends his winter months, I believe, down in Arizona. I think that was part of the conversation, and again, I'd just like to bring to you your discussion, this particular.
I can pipe up. I was the one that, I had, no disrespect to Mr. Dehan, he had an extremely impressive career all out of county, and had only recently moved to Thurston County and doesn't spend the whole year in Thurston County. There are a number of commissions that I would have, or advisory boards, I would have been perfectly fine, but the Planning Commission in particular, in my opinion, I was concerned about not having a long period of time living in Thurston County and availability. So based on those two considerations and those alone, I'm opposing this appointment.
Any comments?
I guess, I would like to point out that Mr. Dehan had his career in King County, and that was both in municipal government, he was the mayor of Federal Way, I think it was, and longtime Boeing executive, and now he has a bunch of grandchildren that live in Thurston County. He's been here about five years now, and I think that as a grandparent myself, there is no better reason to commit yourself to your community than having grandkids, that you're going to help plan for their, for their future. And because of that and his excellent qualifications, I'm very much in favor of Mr. Dehan being appointed to this particular position on the Planning Commission.
Well, I'll tell you, I agree, and when I spoke with him about a week and a half, two weeks, two weeks ago, he told me over the phone, he's making a commitment to attend meetings and fly back as needed for the three months or so that he's out. But then when I, when I hear more, or I learn more about how often he might be needed, I want to be insured that he's not impeding the Planning Commission by not being able to come back every two weeks if that's needed, or I'm not sure what his commitment or level of commitment would be expected at this point now. But I'm going to give him the benefit of the doubt that he will commit to the Planning Commission, because I don't want to lead, I don't want them to be stymied by not having all the information possible before, a couple of weeks before they make a decision, or having benefit of all the discussion of the planners on the Planning Commission of the technical issues. So it will take his return and documentation to find out whether he's going to be able to make that level of commitment, but this time, I'm willing to give him the benefit of the doubt and appoint him. So.
I would move to appoint Don Dehan to the Thurston County Planning Commission for District One to fill a vacant position beginning upon appointment until December 31, 2021.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Any further discussion?
No.
Okay. All in favors of, in favor of appointing Don Dehan to the County Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any negative or nay?
Nay.
Okay, that motion carries. 6B, Approval of the Board of County Commissioners Work Session Sumories for 2018.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is again, one of those items that you approved on your consent agenda, but I just want to make sure that I bring this to a formal vote, since the minutes that you're considering approving are in 2018, and obviously Commissioner Minson was not in his current position at that time.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a.
Go ahead.
I guess this is a formality going back to last year, a cleanup, if you will. Okay. I would move to approve the Board of County Commissioners' Work Session Sumories for July 23, 2018, July 24, 2018, November 7, 2018, and November 16, 2018.
Second. Been moved to second. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. 6C is the Commissioners' Reports from last week. Go ahead, Ty, you have anything? Yeah, I'm sure you do.
Yeah, just briefly, on April 2, we had our Equity Pay Day proclamation, and I attended a evening, evening on pay equity event at the Women's Club Downtown, and there were speakers, and they were, I kind of alerted them to what we had done, and we got, I got another chance to sort of highlight our proclamation and our commitment that we expressed at our meeting that afternoon, so that was good. I attended the Inner City Transit Walk and Roll Youth Education Center ribbon cutting, so I'm on the Board of Inner City Transit, and they have a really cool new facility right across the street from the Olympia Transit Center, where they're going to have bike repair classes and all sorts of things going on. It's connected to Walk and Roll, which your school kids might hear about, but it really is, it's way broader than that in terms of the education programs and youth outreach and multimodal transportation programs that they're going to be having there. And on Sunday, I took the day to visit some county park locations, including the Shoots Falls and Fry Cove, places that I hadn't seen with my own eyes, and I really wanted to get a sense of our county park system. We're really struggling with staff and funding, so I wanted to get a sense of these places, and it was a great day, and I enjoyed myself, and I have some ideas for the future.
Commissioner Edwards.
No, sir. I'm not going to give a report, and I'll have an opportunity later. Thank you.
I only have two items. There was a whole bunch I wanted to do, but was out ill. Attended ribbon cutting out 3400 Mottman. I don't know if you remember that building, that we, County owned that, and we sold it. And went to a ribbon cutting for armor storage. It's a, it's a large storage facility, and they're already exceeding their expectations for capacity, not for capacity, but fulfilling it. But it's a beautiful facility. I was attended by the Chamber of Commerce as well, and ambassadors. And I sat in as Commissioner Edwards' alternate for the TCOM Administrative Board meeting for last, well, for the month, but also recapped some stuff from last year. And that's all I attended last week. That's it for my report. County Manager.
Thank you, Commissioners. Let me walk you through your upcoming schedule for this upcoming week. The appointments included in this report will be those appointments that at least two Commissioners will be present. You may have individual appointments on your individual calendars. Those will not be part of my report. Beginning here, well, 3 o'clock, you have two public hearings. One, you will hear public testimony related to proposed changes on the precinct boundaries, and that will be a presentation by the Auditor's Office. Following to that public hearing, you will hear public testimony related to proposed changes to Thurston County Code Title VI related to ambulance ordinance. At 3:30 in the afternoon today, you will held your regular Board of Health meeting. And at 6:30 this evening, you have an opportunity to connect with the Planning Commission over dinner. That's the annual event in which you have the opportunity to connect with the Planning Commission again. Wednesday, April 10, at noon, you have your monthly lunch meeting with your appointed directors. At 1:00 in the afternoon, you will have a briefing related to a hospital emergency diversion. At 2:00 in the afternoon, you will have an executive session related to a litigation against, between Doe and Thurston County. At 2:30, you will have a briefing related to the tobacco and vapor product prevention, and that will be potential policies you may consider related to that topic. Thursday, after April 11, you will hear from the Public Works as to the state of their affairs at 9:00 in the morning. At 10, you will have your Commissioners' check-in, which an agenda has already been posted. And at 1:00 in the afternoon, you have your monthly Superior Court update with the Presiding Judge of Superior Court. April 12, at 8:45, you will convene in this room to conduct interviews for the Human Resources Director position. And at noon, you will convene in an executive session to have a discussion on the responses that you receive from, as a result of the interviews. Nothing on Monday, April 15, and welcome back here on Tuesday, April 16, where you will be reviewing the agenda, Board meeting for that afternoon. That's all I have for you.
All right. Any questions or comments to the County Manager? All right. Any other business to conduct? Seatmates? Nope? This meeting's adjourned. Now we're going to move right into the public hearing. We'll move into the public hearing right now. For April the 9th, 2019, this is to receive a public hearing, to receive testimony regarding proposed 2019 election precincts maintenance plan. The purpose of this is to give the opportunity for the public to provide any comments on the proposed 2019 election precinct maintenance plan, reflecting annexations by the city of Tumwater and other miscellaneous changes. There's a sign-up sheet in the back, in the back of the room, that you can add your name to if you wish to testify. You will have three minutes to testify. You're not allowed to donate your time to another party, and I will call your name forward for oral testimony. When you hear your name, please come forward, and you'll see a timer up here that'll show three minutes in a couple, in about a minute. It'll show three minutes. It'll time down as you begin. When you hear, when it reaches zero and your time's up, you'll hear a beep, and that means you're finished. However, you'll be allowed to finish your statement, if you have a, not statement, but sentence if you're mid-sentence. Please silence your cell phones. And now the public hearing for the proposed 2019 election precinct maintenance plan is now open, and I'm going to call for Auditor Mary Hall or staff to provide background information about the proposal, written comments submitted for public hearing, or additional information requested by the Board. Welcome, Auditor.
Excuse me. I am trying to get the Auditor's Office PowerPoint up, but we're having problems with the computer, so I'll continue to work on it, but I wanted to let you all know that technical difficulties.
Thank you. But of course.
Murphy's Law. Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay. So thank you for hearing us today for these precinct maintenance changes. We do this on an annual basis. Anytime that cities or towns annex property, we're required to adjust the precinct boundaries because you can't have precincts that, where a part of it is in the city and a part of it isn't in the county. That is against state law. So this year, we have some changes to the city of Olympia. We have three precinct consolidations and six precinct boundary improvements, and then the city of Tumwater also had two annexations. So when annexations happen, we're also required to adjust the legal descriptions, just to make sure that we comply with state law. So, because Commissioner, boundaries are legal descriptions by precincts. So when you see the changes to your legal description, it doesn't mean that your districts have changed, just that the precincts on the border have changed. So we have a PowerPoint presentation that hopefully we can get up and see. Otherwise, I think, Tony, would you be able to do it without the PowerPoint?
I could. I don't know how understandable it would be.
Probably wouldn't be, yeah. Do we have any kind of ETA or update on what this will take time-wise?
Just give us a minute, yeah.
Okay. Is this, I understand the importance of it. Is it that, is it vital, though, to the presentation, Mary?
I think that's for informational purposes, just to show you what we've done, because anytime we have annexations, and, you know, we also utilize it as an opportunity to clean up the boundaries, make them follow, you know, since its track blocks aren't always logical divisions, so when we have an opportunity to just make a precinct, say Moore Square, for example, we use this as an opportunity.
Is this presentation on the website or on the other webpage?
Yes, the presentation is on our website, so if the public would like to see it, it's on Thurstonvotes.org, and they can view it there, and you have the copy of the presentation in front of it, in front of you.
We're moved, we have some movement here. Gary, Commissioner Edwards, you have something to add?
I guess what I'd like to do is, because we have discussed this on numerous occasions and had presentations from, from your staff or yourself at work sessions, and as long as we have this available to the public, I don't know that they're going to get a lot more detailed off of a screen that may or may not show up at Citizens Home. I think we could just go ahead with it and then make sure, especially being you've stated that this information and the visuals are available on your website, let's just go ahead, and we've got a pretty good handle on what we're doing here anyway, and not inconvenience the public anymore.
How, Mary, how long has this been on the website? It's already posted?
It's been on the website for 20 days.
20 days it's been posted already?
Yes.
Have you received any feedback, voicemails, emails, snail mail?
We've not received any feedback, which is actually quite normal.
Okay. I'm ready to proceed.
Just, just kind of a technicality we're cleaning.
Okay. Do you have any additional information that your staff want to provide, or does the Board have any questions or comments? Please go ahead, Ty.
I just had a question. I, I know we've gone over this, but, and I, I understand the annexation part, and I understand the, the switching, the normalizing of boundaries, but where there's two that are merging, I think that's, there's three examples of that. What's that, I mean, why is there a merger? I mean, why was there two precincts?
It's for cost savings. Anytime you have a precinct, you have to have a separate ballot type for each precinct, so it eliminates, you know, one ballot type, so it's really for efficiencies. And typically, there may have been part of that precinct that was, say, inside the city and now, or outside the city, and now it's inside the city. Do you want to add anything, Tony?
Yeah, typically, we'd like to.
Get to the mic, Tony. Get to the mic before you talk, man.
Typically, we'd like to have our precincts have around 800 to 1,200 people, and the ones that were merging, oh, I think one of them was like 250 voters, so we kind of want to try and equalize those out as we go along as much as possible.
That's what I was, yeah, I got it. Okay, thank you.
And a lot of people have the misperception. And a lot of people have the misperception this is like gerrymandering and such. Will you explain that it's not?
No, we aren't allowed to take any political parties or anything into consideration when we draw our precincts, that's in the state constitution.
Good, okay, thank you. Anything further? Nope? Okay, thank you. Then is there anybody that signed up on the sign-up sheet in the back to testify? No? None at all? Okay. I'll ask anybody in the audience, anybody want to address the Commission on this issue? Okay, then I'm going to close this public hearing.
A motion to close the...
Motion to close, that's right, motion.
I would move to close this public hearing. Second?
Been moved to second, did you close? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's closed.
Thank you.
Now, what is the decision of the Board?
I would like to make a...
For the pleasure.
I would like to make a motion to adopt this ordinance, and for the proposed legal description and precinct boundary changes, 12 precincts with boundary line adjustments, updating 11 precincts and one Commissioner District legal descriptions, and repealing five precincts and legal descriptions, and the ordinance for the proposed legal description for County Commissioner District Number Three.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2019 election precinct maintenance plan. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and that carries, thank you.
Okay.
That's done. Thank you very much. Now we're moving right into the next public hearing. This is accept and consider public comment and review revisions on ordinance amending Title VI of the Thurston County Code. The purpose is to take public testimony on ordinance amending the, okay, number six, Title VI of the Thurston County Code. Okay, it's the ambulance ordinance, there we go. Now, there's a sign-up sheet in the back, and it's the same as before. If you wish to testify, sign in. You'll have three minutes to testify. I'll call your name out, come up, identify yourself, and you'll be timed down, and we're not going to respond, you can't donate your time. So with that in mind, I'm opening up the public hearing, so now open. Is there a staff presentation from Kurt Harding? Kurt Harden, come on up, please.
Good afternoon, Kurt Harden, Director of Emergency Services. I did not have the foresight to prepare a PowerPoint, so I just have a few comments to make. The, this proposed ordinance change affects only private ambulances within Thurston County. What happened is, is that under the Thurston County Code, the EMS Council Operations Committee is required to do an annual review of the ambulance ordinance. Based on the review of this last year, we found that there were some areas within the ordinance that were, in one case, situation was a little vague regarding transport of patients when a medic is onboard the ambulance itself during transport. And so what we wanted to do was walk through the four substantive changes. We also took the opportunity to change a few, put a comma in, delete a comma, or somewhere along those lines, but the, the large changes that I want to highlight was under 616010 subsection, subparagraph C, we added regional fire authority. Previously, it just discussed fire district and fire departments, and since we have a regional fire authorities in Thurston County, we updated that. Going further, we turned around and we, on section 616030, the application fee, that was changed from $20 to $100 per private ambulance company, regardless of the number of ambulances they run inside of Thurston County on a daily basis. And the reason for that is, hadn't been looked at since the early 90s and adjusted since the early 90s, and we also have a staff breakdown of the cost by staff of processing these ambulance applications as well. Under 616030, subparagraph I, we add in, "Operations Committee shall inform the Emergency Medical Services Council on all applications for informational purposes." Previously, it was going directly from the Operations Committee to the Board of County Commissioners, and therefore, we added EMS Council for informational purposes, since they have oversight and advisory for EMS purposes, or EMS actions within Thurston County. The next one, the third one, we added a paragraph to 616050 where it says, "In the rare circumstance when a medic one paramedic accompanies a patient on the private ambulance transport unit due to emergency circumstances, the private ambulance company shall bill medic one according to their respective public rates. Medic one shall set their reimbursement schedule according to the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services rate schedule and shall publish this no later than January 1st of each year. No additional fee, charge, or other costs shall be submitted to the patient or their health care provider." The reason for this is, when we do what we call advanced life support, or ALS, transport in Thurston County under medic one and paramedics' transport, there is no fee to the patient or their insurance company for transport to an emergency room. In the rare circumstances, and we estimate that out of 34,000 transports each year inside of Thurston County, we estimate about, about 24 to 25 a year may incur where a private ambulance company, due to exigent circumstances, needs a paramedic onboard for life support or life-saving situations. That is considered an ALS transport. So therefore, the private ambulance company should bill medic one, not the patient for that transport. For the 24,000 transports that take place, that are basic life support, or BLS, and private ambulance companies are a large part of that, that's appropriate for them to bill that or their insurance company based on the, their current rates that they put in their ambulance application. So that's a change that we want to clarify, because in the past, some patients had been billed by the, by private ambulance companies because of some vagueness within the ordinance, so we've added that. And then the last piece that we had was adding the EMS Council to be part of the process for information when we make recommendations to ambulance ordinance changes. They were not in there previously. So those are the substantive changes to the ambulance ordinance.
Okay, any questions or comments? Anything? Go ahead.
This has been approved by which Oversight Group?
Thank you very much, Commissioner Edwards. It was reviewed by the, by the EMS Council Operations Committee and unanimously voted for recommending approval. It went to the EMS Council, and then even though it was informational for the EMS Council, they recommended unanimous approval as well for the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Have you received any public comment in-house?
We have not received any public comment, and it was boasted back in March, over 20 days ago, and we've not received any public comment to, as of today.
Okay. That's it then, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There were, there's a sign-up sheet, I have somebody that's signed up that wants to testify as well, I'll call you up, Chris Clem. Hi, Chris.
Hello, Commissioners, thank you for giving me a moment to speak.
For the record, you tell us your full name and where you live.
Yeah, my name is Chris Clem. I'm the Director of Operations for Olympic Ambulance here in Thurston County, and I live in District One, up near Boston Harbor. So I just wanted to speak briefly in support of the changes to the ambulance ordinance as the largest of the private ambulance companies here in Thurston County. We feel that the, the fee increase is very timely, obviously, it's not being reviewed since the 90s. We want to make sure that the fee that we're paying is covering the administrative costs for the county, and it's very appropriate, and as well as the change to the billing at the Medicare allowable that the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services put forward. That keeps us and AMR and any other private ambulance company who may eventually operate in Thurston County within compliance. If we bill anything less than that Medicare allowable, then it puts us at risk for our continued participation in the Medicare and Medicaid programs. So we wholeheartedly support the changes to the ambulance ordinance, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Nobody else has signed up, but I'm going to offer an opportunity for anybody in the public that would like to address the Board on this topic? None? Okay. And is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I would move to close this public hearing.
Second?
Moved in second to close, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, this public hearing is closed, and the next pleasure of the Board?
I guess I'd like to just comment one more time, being it's been about 25 years now since this has been reviewed, and the EMS Council and governing bodies have all unanimously endorsed this. I would like to make a motion to approve revisions to the Thurston County Title VI ambulance ordinance as listed.
I second that.
It's moved and seconded to approve an ordinance amending Thurston County Code Title VI. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that carries, thank you. And any further business on this? Nope? This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, sir.
Now, is it Sockit Toomey time, or we're taking a break?
3:30, you come back, Board of Health.
When's the sock picture thing?
Oh, right now. Thank you.
Get the sock puppet out of the way.